Good evening, welcome to the city, the, excuse me, the Monday, September 14th, 2020, Series City Council Regular Meeting. At this time, can we have the roll call, please?
Here.
Councilmember DeRosa.
Here.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
And Mayor Vieira.
Here.
Next, we will have the invocation by Pastor Michael Hanks from the Pentecostals of Series.
Well, we would thank you for the opportunity to come together and gather together with the citizens and the leadership of our city, but I pray that you give each and every one of us wisdom and direction. Bless our leadership, bless our citizens, and bless the, the, the day of the city and the, in the future of our city, and we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, this evening, we have one presentation. It's a proclamation declaring Sunday, September 6th, 2020, as Jaswant Singh Kahala, or Kahara, Kahala, I believe it is, Day in the City of Series, and I apologize if I didn't get that correct. So. Proclamation, proclamation, Jaswant Singh Day in the City of Series, whereas Jaswant was a strong advocate for the democratic and human rights of all people, and whereas Jaswant was a highly respected leader within the Sikh community and beyond, and whereas Jaswant documented human rights abuse and fought for the dignity of all that had their humanity trampled by the Indian government, and whereas the City of Series is proud of its Sikh community and its home to the broad service organization such as the Modesto Sikh Temple in Series, Baba, uh, I'm sorry, how do you, what do you pronounce? The Fakir Foundation and the Jakara Movement that are committed to social justice for all, and whereas September 6th is recognized by Sikhs and human rights supporters across the world as the date of kidnapping and murder of Jaswant Singh in 1995. Now therefore, I, Chris Vieira, Mayor of the City of Series, do hereby proclaim September 6th, 2020, as Jaswant Singh Kahara Day proclaimed this 14th day of September 20th, 20. And again, I apologize if I mispronounced that at all, but is there a representative that is in the audience?
I don't see the representative in our attendees list just yet. Dan, do you?
Okay.
So we'll make sure that we get the proclamation to the party requesting.
Okay. With that, we'll move to conflict of interest declaration. Is there anyone on the council that would like to declare a conflict of interest on any of the consent calendar items, or the unfinished business or public hearing? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or the public for special consideration.
As you're age. No, you have your hand going up.
Item B.
B, item B.
Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead of that.
Actually, we'd have citizens' communication.
Yeah, I see that. Okay. I'm sorry, we'll go back to the citizens' communication to council on matters not included on the agenda. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in city council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. Public comments will now be accepted through Zoom. For those participating through the web, please raise your hand to request to speak. That's the hand icon at the bottom of the screen. If you're participating by telephone, please press star nine by your phone. The city clerk will call your name in the order the requests are received. When it's time for you to speak, the city clerk will unmute your microphone. The city clerk will please provide the name of each person that is requested to speak. And then after the, the Zoom comments, we'll ask if the city clerk has received any public comments through email, and then we will move on from there. So at this time, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on a non-agenda item? If so, please raise the speaking hand. Looks like we have a couple. I'm assuming the first one is Mr. Heap.
I'm seeing, I think it's Dave Pratt. Mike. Your mic is unmuted, Mr. Pratt.
Oh, yeah, this is Dave Pratt series. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, I know everybody's been wondering about Walmart, Walmart, but what about the triangle that's across the street, the southwest corner of Mitchell and Service? How, where's that, it stand at?
Sure, Westbrook.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Pratt. That project's known as the Series Gateway Center. They received their entitlements earlier this year in 2020. They are kind of in progress getting some of their improvement documents together. They haven't submitted for building permits, but they are anxious for the Mitchell Ranch Center, the Walmart project across the street to start construction, and once they do so, they're hoping that they can get started on their project.
Okay, so they're wait, they're waiting on Walmart also then. Thank you.
Is that it, Dave? Sounds like it is. Okay. Mr. Yankley?
Yes, G. Yankley, Series. Uh, two items tonight. First of all, what you hear, I am not picking on any of them in the city council. Sometimes it gets misinterpreted right away, so I just want to let you know that. Okay, the first one, I've been around town, like many of us, and I see the signs posted in different places. Some of them, probably the people that have posted, they're running for positions outside of our jurisdiction and some inside, and some of them probably have permission on property, some of them don't. But what really gets me is the ones I've seen, the few that are in our city, and they're running for a particular position, they've posted signs on properties that's got all kinds of trash. So to me, why, why do they put a sign there without trying to do something, you know, they're wanting to run for an office, why don't they pick up all the trash and then put their sign up there? It, it's just really discouraging to this, see that stuff in the city that continues to go on. We don't have complete control, but if they're on a, a property with permission or one without it, I think they should pick up the garbage and make it look presentable before they put their sign there. And the second one is, uh, everyone on the city council gets some benefits from the city, contributed to, from taxpayers' money, and they get a monetary benefit each month, and I know it's not large, and they get, uh, healthcare insurance, and they get a telephone with an individual number. And each one of these phones, if you call them, they have an answering part on their phone. Well, sometimes people don't check their phones. I know you're not getting paid a lot, but I encourage the council members to, to at least check their phone several times a week to see if there's incoming recordings from constituents in their area, and even if they're not in their area, they might want to talk to them about another issue. But again, they need to check the calls on their answering machines several times a week, and, uh, if you do recently, somebody on the council is going to see that I called about a week ago, or close to a week ago, and I still haven't got a response. So I just hope that, you know, whether somebody gets voted out or voted in, that it's noted that they should take charge of their phone that they're empowered with to use for the city, or to accept calls from their constituents in their, their areas, because it's very disturbing. And I know there's emails too. I've sent emails before and not got answers either. So, and then when I confront people, they say, oh, I never got it. Well, it didn't come back to me, so it must be on your email. So the same with the phones. Please, you know, for what it's worth, and a lot of people won't get no calls, I understand that, but at least check a couple times a week. It's not that much effort. All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on a non-agend item? Okay, I don't see any other hands. Have we gotten any emails? The clerk?
No emails, Mayor.
Okay. All right, with that, we will move on to appointments to boards and commissions. So it looks like we have one item. Appointments to the Measure H Citizens Oversight Committee. Mr. Westbrook?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. At this time, staff is recommending that we continue this item into the first meeting in November. We have a couple of applicants, but for reasons of those applications, it would be necessary to just extend it to the first meeting in November for consideration.
Okay. Do we need a motion on that, Tom, or is just, just direction? Is the council okay with extending that? Okay, I'm seeing nods from all of the council members, so we'll go ahead and extend that to.
So we'll put that on the first meeting in November.
Okay. All right, now we will move to conflict of interest declaration. Is there anyone on the council that would like to declare a conflict of interest on any of the eight, excuse me, nine consent calendar items, or one unfinished and, and one public hearing item? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or the public for special consideration. Otherwise, a recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. This time, is there anyone on the council that would like a consent calendar item pulled for further discussion?
Item six.
You said six?
Six.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, is there anyone on the audience that would like a consent calendar item pulled for further discussion other than item six? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, I don't see any, so I will look for direction on the other items. Move to adopt one, two, three, eight, four, five, A, B, C, seven, eight, and nine. We have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit.
Aye.
Councilmember DeRosa.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Vieira.
Yes.
Motion passes five, zero.
All right, item number six, resolution number 2020-96, authorizing the acceptance of the donation of a forklift. Vice Mayor Rhino?
I had a question for the chief. Since Salida is donating this, I'll wait till you get your microphone. Since Salida is donating this, I would assume it's used?
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Rhino, what was the question?
Since Salida is donating it, I can assume that it's a used forklift?
Yes.
And have we conducted any kind of safety test on that to be sure that there are no issues since we will have personnel using this equipment?
Yes, it's currently at Farm Supply.
So, so you're saying that we've had a safety inspection done?
They're, they're currently conducting that now. We have to get a battery for it and a propane tank. So once we accept the donation, I'll accept the purchase of the tank and the battery. But I was assured by the Salida personnel that it was running a year ago. It's just been sitting for the last year, and it was in good working order.
Okay, well, that's great that they want to give us this forklift, and it's out at Tractor Supply right now, and I'm not concerned that it needs a battery and propane or whatever it is. But my concern is more about the safety issues, that if we're going to be putting our personnel on it, that we want to be sure that it's been checked for safety, not just necessarily for maintenance, because even if you wanted to give, donate, say, a car seat or something to a nonprofit, they don't even take those anymore because of the liability issue. So that would be my concern, that the liability factor, that it's been sitting there for a year, they assume it's okay, but yet we're going to be putting our personnel as well as others from other jurisdictions onto this piece of equipment with many moving parts, and we don't know if it's, um, safe or not. Is that, is that something that our maintenance people could have done, our mechanics could have done a safety inspection, or they're not familiar with forklifts?
Yeah, Farm Supply will do a certified inspection once we get it running.
They will do a certified?
Yes, and they will do that on a yearly basis, along with the yearly maintenance. And we talked to them about doing a yearly maintenance on it and what that cost would be. It would be approximately $300 a year to do the maintenance and the certified inspection.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions on this item? Right, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Did Mr. Yankley just raise his hand, or was that from previous?
I think it's just raised it.
Okay. Mr. Yankley?
Yes, I, I was listening. I heard the chief say that, that the cost of the yearly maintenance would be $300 a year, which seems pretty reasonable. I hope that, uh, they get an extra tank, and I'd like to know how often that they believe they'll be using that on a daily basis, or, or just once in a while, and how much it's going to cost in a year, or propane gas, or liquid propane.
Yeah, Mr. Yankley, it will be used very infrequently.
Okay, well, I hate to, I'd hate for you to have, you know, something, a minor emergency, hopefully not a major one, because forklifts do come in very handy in certain situations, in some low-key situations, but to not have an extra tank or something could put you in a predicament when possibly you can't get it refilled right away. So I hope there's another tank behind the one that comes with the forklift. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other comments, so I'll bring it back to the council for either further discussion or direction.
Move to adopt resolution number 2020-96.
Second, you have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit.
Aye.
Councilmember DeRosa.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Vieira.
Yes.
Motion passes five, zero.
Hey, thank you. We have one unfinished business item this evening. It's the Bertolati Disposal Solid Waste Agreement. A motion directing the city manager to work to proceed with a Proposition 218 Notice and hearing to increase fees for solid waste activities to meet the Cal recycle requirements. Jeremy?
Hello? Is it there? Thank you, Mayor and council members. Tonight, I wanted to take a few minutes and some follow-up to the last meeting. Two very short, brief slides. So one of the questions from Mr. Klein was regarding a flyer. We have created a flyer. It's in draft form. There was some discussion internally about producing the flyer for when we do the noticing and a few things like that, and there's, I think that we're going to wait until probably mid next year and produce the flyer a couple of times, two, maybe three times in mailings. Right now, it might be a little too confusing since the leaf and limb program actually doesn't go away until January of 2022. The second one was, update some language in the, in the draft agreement to include language in there for Bertolati to produce bins for community cleanup projects. One of the recommendations from the beautification committee was that if they were to get to a group together to go out and clean, for example, Hatch Road, if Bertolati could help out a little bit. And so Bertolati's agreed to it. We've added language in the agreement. The third, the timeline. Timeline would be, the public hearing would begin the next council meeting, September 28th. We would mail the notices October 1st, with the 45-day period for the, for the public notices, for the Prop 218 rules. The conclusion of the public hearing would be November 23rd at the council meeting. And then that same night, we would begin the public hearing for the, to update the ordinance. There's some language in a couple of sections in the ordinance, and then to get updated for the three-can system and to meet some Cal Recycle's requirements. And then fourth would be the update of the pricing to include the 60-gallon containers. As Councilmember Rhino and I talked about quite a bit, I did work with Bertolati. We did come up with some pricing, and all that's included in the next slide. And that is what the rate table looks like. The 22, 23, 24, and 25 are, those are CPI adjustments to the rates. There's a lot of unknowns. Unfortunately, there's a lot of unknowns with Cal Recycle right now. We don't know, if we don't meet the diversion rates, what's going to come down from Cal Recycle. We don't know, for example, the tipping fee for the waste disposal, we know is going to increase, we just don't know how much, and it increases annually. We know that the organics is going to increase from $30 to $60 at some point by the city of Modesto. We just don't know when. Some of these costs help out articulate, they help alleviate some of those additions. That way, we don't have to come back for another rate increase at any time soon. And with that said, I'll take any questions.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
Mr. Thomas, on page 21 of the franchise agreement, under B, city-sponsored community cleanups, what's the difference between those two paragraphs? One says, "up to twice per year," or "city-sponsored community cleanups," and then the next one says, "up to five times per year," um, for a community service cleanup day.
About to, I'm sorry. If a group of persons were to get together and go out to Hatch Road to do a cleanup, Bertolati would supply dumpsters for that cleanup, so that they would clean, similar to what you did down on Fourth Street. We would provide a dumpster, everything would get thrown in the dumpster, and Bertolati would haul away. To the community cleanup is just that, it's, you know, Bertolati would deliver large bins and do a community, whether we had it dropped at one location, two locations, and we would do that up to twice a year.
Okay, and then on the next page, it's the comment about four-foot branches. You can put a four-foot branch up to four feet into your waste wheeler?
Correct.
How, how can you do that? I mean, I know that you would cut it down, but I'm trying to pitch your mine, and even I think if I did it in two-feet lengths, I don't know that it would still fit in there. Is that possible?
Yeah. The organic containers measure 46 inches to the rim, so two inches shy of four feet. Have to pack it full.
Okay, and then my last comment is just really about what the monthly fees are going to go up to. It's, in four years, it would be almost double what we're paying now, correct?
Yes.
Which I thought was really, kind of, would be a hard pill to swallow for most people in the community. So I took it upon myself to pull up some information, and Houston currently is paying $22.84 a month. Patterson is paying $32.94. Sherlock pays between $27.40 and $41.70, and Modesto's paying $35.52. I couldn't find any information on Oakdale. So once I pulled that up, to me, it just, it, it looks like it's really bad because it's almost twice what we're paying now. But when I compare it with what the other cities are paying, I don't really think it's that bad.
True, and unfortunately, as the other cities haven't started the Prop 218 processes to do the increases for the three-can systems. I know Sherlock's at a three-can system, Modesto's at a, at a two, some, some locations, and three in some locations, and most of the other cities are only two-can systems.
Correct. I, I just wanted to make that comment, that it, it looks horrible because it's almost twice what we pay now, but when you look at the other cities, I don't really think it is. Thank you.
And we will be coming back on an annual basis in December prior to requesting any increases for those CPI adjustments. Those aren't automatics.
Thank you.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes, it is page 21 of the contract, illegal dumping. On here, I'm reading that Bertolati will pick up illegal dunks upon request, but it says, "once per week." Does that mean only one time per week if we notify them an illegal dump, and they will only go to one location? Or would it, what, what does that work?
So the way that it works now is, is that illegal dumps, the phone rings, it either goes to code enforcement or our office, which in turn goes to code enforcement, if it's on the public right of way. That gets identified by code enforcement that it was in fact a legal dump, and if they can identify a person responsible for the dump, if they can, they work with that person to pick it up. If they can't, they put it on a list for Bertolati to pick up. Bertolati takes care of that list on a once-per-week basis. And there's up to 50 locations? 50, or do you remember how many? There's, there's a large number of locations that are on that list on a weekly basis, along with the bulky items, because we do bulky items once a week as well.
So if we had 25 locations, they would only do the service on Mondays?
Monday, Tuesdays.
Okay.
So what this does is, this puts language in there for them to do this, along with leaf and limb program. What's happening is, is that the, the illegal dump program comes in, Bertolati goes and tries to take care of that list, and then they get emergency illegal dumps. When they have to do that, they have to break away from picking up the leaf and limb. They get pushed off on that. They push our street sweepers back. That's how everything just dominoes from there. This puts language to make them, to put, to force their hand to do illegal dumps for, for specific two days a week, or so.
And I'm sure there's provisions in there and understanding if we needed them to, you know, on, on a day that they don't do it, let's say it was on a high-traffic area, to clean up things, whether it was like Mitchell Service Hatch?
Yeah, so if we have any illegal, anything that's dumped like that in large volumes, pretty much the city crews will take care of. But if they, if I need them to, which I have done several times in the past year, called Steve, and they just make a special arrangement for us and come pick it up.
Okay.
They take care of it.
Councilmember DeRosa?
Yeah, this is state-mandated, correct, Mr. Thomas?
The organics and the, yes.
Yes. The, we just can't say, oh, we just don't want to do it. We have to do it.
Correct.
Okay. Can somebody say, for example, you know, I don't want Bertolati taking my food recyclable. Can I say, as a citizen, because it's fast, can I just say, I don't want the blue garbage can?
Absolutely. They have to self-haul it, and they have to certify that it's being self-hauled. And then what's going to happen is, is those, those residents that say they want to opt out of the program, we have to go in and do a trash assessment on. There's assessment and an audit, so we have to basically dump their black garbage can out to try to identify the recyclables that are in there or pay a third party. Dump it out, identify the recyclables to figure out, are they actually self-hauling, or are they just not producing any recyclables, giving them to their neighbor, whatever the case may be, or?
Right. And it states that the leaf and limb will be gone, correct?
In January of '22.
In January of '22?
Correct.
Okay. member you told me, he told me verbatim in regard to what the rates are everywhere else. And so, you know, even though I know that long time ago, being on the council, when we had the water rate structure, we had to triple our water rates or double, I remember, you might remember that, we were still very, very, very low. And those neighboring cities are going to go up, as was stated, and you know what? I mean, it's something that that we have to do, so. That's it.
All right, I I've had some questions in reading through the contract here. Do I need to take a chainsaw out and cut up my Christmas tree when I take it out to the street if it's over four feet?
No.
Well, that's what it says in here. It says that they won't pick up, it says, "In addition, the guarantee shall collect green Christmas trees cut in lengths of four feet or less and placed in the automatic organic waste container as part of the green waste collection program."
The Christmas tree program's still there.
But that's not what it says.
What section's that?
That's under Section 36B. And then it says, and I, the only issue that I have with this program, I I don't have any issue with collecting organics and separating things, but we have citizens that are so used to the leaf and limb program that now the next paragraph says, "Stumps or branches exceeding six inches in diameter," I get that, "or four feet in length will not be collected." How are we, I mean, I look, I drive down my street, and people have piles of leaf and limb, they're way longer than four feet, and then we're not going to collect palm fronds either. So I, I, my only concern is is we're going to pick and choose what we want and the lengths that we want, and I get that, but I I still believe we need some sort of a leaf and limb program. And I know we're giving ample time to phase out of that, but I I think we're really asking for a a big problem, and a lot of people just to put it out and just say, I'm just going to leave it there, and I and I don't care, because they've picked it up before, and now my rate's going up, and I'm getting less service, and I have to have another can, and so I I again, I can support collecting the lawn and other things in a separate can, but when it comes to somebody going through and trimming a 50-foot tree and putting it out on the sidewalk, I think we still need to offer that service. And I don't know if that means the rates have to be a little more or what, but I I think we need to provide that service. That's just me personally.
Mr. Thomas, when we first started the leaf and limb program, wasn't it just for a couple months or something? It wasn't all year long?
Correct. It was October, November, December.
So would that help if it was just a regular leaf and limb just for those months? Because typically, that would be when people would be pruning, I would think.
Right. I I mean, I don't know how it evolved. I think it's like every two weeks now, or every, it seems like that, I mean, because I I see that.
We follow.
Put it out there.
We follow with the street sweeper right behind them, and it's a two-week schedule.
Okay. I mean, I, yeah, I think we could, we can limit it, but I think we still, I personally think we still need to offer it. I know people, they're not going to stuff all that in the trash can, they're just going to put it on the sidewalk.
Would that cost us more to do that? Would that cost us more?
It would. You know, the organics program with adding 12,000 containers out there for the organics program itself was a $7 per month increase to take away the leaf and limb to keep it at that rate. It was a $2, I believe it's $2.70, pretty close to $3 is what Bertolotti is at right now for the leaf and limb program as it exists today.
But if we only did three months versus 12 months?
I can negotiate that with with Steve. I mean, just wherever your direction is, I can negotiate it.
Or maybe once a quarter, I don't know. Something that I think we provide to the citizens that allow them to be able to use that service. I mean, it's not like they have to segment anything, that's still organic waste.
Well, I I don't think we would want to do something like once a quarter, because people are so used to putting it out every two weeks that it's going to sit there for a few months, kind of the same thing you were talking about if we just did away with it.
Well, then how will we do it in October, November, December, once a month?
Wasn't it every week? Or you would put it out there, and then they came through and?
It was biweekly for the last quarter of the year, and it was to handle the fall prunings as well as Christmas trees. That was the original intent behind when it started.
So you're saying it would be every two weeks?
Yes.
For the three months?
Just for the three months, like we used to do.
That's fine.
And again, because people, I think, typically prune during the winter months, and the rest of the time, they should be putting their grass clippings in their other can.
Right. And I'm not, I'm not talking about grass clippings or the the small stuff, I'm talking about the big, when when somebody comes and has it got down. I mean, I spent a tremendous amount of money hiring somebody to come trim all my trees, and they ground it up and took it with them.
Right.
But I don't think a lot of people have the wherewithal to to spend the money that I spent to maintain all the trees at my house. So I think we need to provide that service to be able to allow people, if they want to cut their own trees, to put it out in the street. That's just what I feel that we should do. I'm okay with it. I mean, and if they need a little bit more money, I mean, I'm I'm not a big advocate of raising people's rates, but I think it's a service that we have. And and and, I mean, maybe it is that we allow them to deliver it free to Bertolotti, I don't know, but.
Well, I know they'd be, I know Bertolotti would be good with that. We were to to deliver, if the resident were to deliver the green waste, the organics for those three-month window to Bertolotti, they'd be good with that. It's the additional equipment, manpower, and staffing to come pick it up every two weeks. That's the, that's where the cost is.
But now, if we do away with leaf and limb, what are they going to do with those people that are going out and doing leaf and limb?
Their organics doing the toders, because right now, it's a crew of two. The packer with the packer and the claw running behind, running all the streets every two weeks, picking up the leaf and limb. January of '22, we stop leaf and limb, we start doing the green can, that becomes two packer trucks. That that manpower's being taken care of with additional expense on the packers.
Find out what the cost would be.
Just find out what the cost would be, you obviously didn't negotiate that.
Yeah, I'll work on it.
And then if it's too high, then during that two-to-three-month period, they can just take it on over there by themselves.
With this point, if there's any other comments, then I'll go ahead and open it up for the public to comment on. It looks like the first person we have is Dave.
I will unmute your mic, Dave.
Oh, yeah, this is Dave Pratt of Series. I I I know this is a big deal, and I I find that a lot of the people don't separate between the blue barrel and the green barrel as it is. And a lot of people put their lawn clippings out on the street. I've seen just small piles, like like a couple basketfuls. And not only that, they put their trash, I see they put trash in amongst the limbs and leaves and the lawn clippings in the streets. And so this is going to be, this this will be interesting, see what's what's going to happen, that the, if they, these people that refuse to separate will separate. Thank you.
Mr. Yankley?
I'll try a third time.
Sorry about that. Jane Yankley, Series. I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, on part of the subject of this disposal problem we have in the city of Series. I I think that the the citizens, and that's only a few, few of them that do this, but there's a a large majority out of the whole that decides what they want to tell us what to do in the city that you council members are appointed to. They're they're dictating that they're going to throw garbage in the street, they're going to do this, they're going to do that, and you're going to like it or else. This been going on for years, and I think Linda Reynolds pointed it out a few times about how bad it's been and and why they even started picking this up. And another thing, too, is, you know, has, Mr. Thomas, have you researched some of this from other cities? Because there's other cities, they don't have these programs all the time like this. They're more respectable citizens, and I hopefully, it doesn't have to do with where you live and the the cost of your home, but these people are just not compliant, and to give them more of an edge, they're just going to take as much as they can. And and I think it's a good deal that the state's going into this years ago as a young man, and probably all the council people there, members, that there wasn't any programs like this. People were responsible and respectful, they cut their trees, trimmed them, whatever. If they couldn't take them to the dump, they found somebody or a means to get there, and they did their own beautification program in their own community, in their own streets. To give them more room, I think it's totally wrong. I think what Mr. Thomas and the state of California are going to enact, I think it's a, it's the right thing to do. We need to eliminate this mess that we have encountered for decades. Thank you.
Looks like Maria, Castillo?
I will unmute your mic. Castillo? I'm getting a message that says, "Allow to talk is not available" because she's using an older version of Zoom. Let me promote her to panelists and see if that helps.
Can you try to unmute your mic, Ms. Castillo?
Yes, can you hear me? Hi, good evening, everybody. My question, and actually, it's more of a concern than a question, is, I've been here in Series for a while, for a long time, or 25 years, and I became a homeowner 14 years ago. I've seen my city of Series bill, utility bill, raised from $50 to $200. Sometimes it becomes kind of like too much money for me, but I'm always trying not waste too much water. I think that's part of it, but it's hard to because I have a lawn, and I have, and I have swimming pool, so my rate's always higher. Now, you're going to add on another garbage can, which is going to make even more expensive for me, and I'm a single mom, trying to make mortgage on my own. That's just my concern, and my other question is, now, if I have no one to do the yard work for me, I'm 52 years old, I have severe arthritis, I can't really do too much yard work, it depends on someone else to help me. If I have to trim down my trees because they get too big, huge, I'm always getting, I've had to take care of my yard sometimes, it overgoes, and I get like a violation, I get like a letter, I don't get violations, I haven't gotten them yet because they gave me 10 days, I have to find someone to do all the pruning, everything for me before I get a ticket. I already got one once, $100 ticket, I haven't paid it because I just don't have the money, especially right now with this employed, trying to make ends meet. When is this going to start? When are we going to start billing, being billed for this? Do we have to do this? I'm so used to just putting my leaves and everything, like everybody, you know, on the street. I don't have a chainsaw, I don't have that kind of equipment, it's going to be more costly. Last time I had to trim a tree, I had to rent a machine, it was expensive, and it was only like for every hour, you know, they were like charging me for every hour over here at Ace, Ace Hardware. So just thinking, I'm just going to make the comment that that's all, just, I'm trying to speak for everybody, you know, who that's in my situation. Okay, that's, that's all I had to say. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, and just to address a couple of the comments that you asked, this is being discussed, or we're going out for a 218 vote as a result of the legislature in Sacramento passing laws saying that we have to segment the 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 waste stream. So if we didn't have to do that, we wouldn't be having an increase. So my suggestion is if you have a beef with that, pick up the phone and talk to somebody in Sacramento, because that's where all of this infinite wisdom is coming from, so.
Sacramento, so like who do I call in Sacramento? Do you guys have a phone number, direct number? Who do I?
We'd be more than happy to provide you with the elected officials in in the region, and you can speak with them about that.
Okay. So do I call you, contact you guys?
Well, the the city clerk will can reach out to you.
You can contact me, City Clerk Diane Perez.
City Clerk, okay. I appreciate that you guys need my information. Does she have my information, my number?
Want to give me?
You you want to do it offline?
We'll do it offline.
That way, you know, it doesn't get broadcast to everybody.
Okay, okay, I can do it offline.
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Brandt?
Your mic should be unmuted.
Good evening, council. Hey, I'm just curious, so we're going to wind up with three cans, and I I go back to the Jeremy chart, and I go to, what was it, 2025 or whatever, whatever it was, was our grand total. So are we paying X amount of dollars for each can? Is that the way I'm reading it? Did I read it wrong?
Do you want to put that?
Tom, can you put that slide back up?
Slide back up.
So if you look at the the, Lee, if you look at the 90-gallon line for residential?
Uh huh.
In January of 2021, your total bill's going to be 2632.
Right.
For all three, for all three cans.
Oh, okay.
That's for the, that's for all three cans.
Okay, okay, yeah, because, I mean, as I go down, and I saw the commercial end, but I looked at toders, you know, it's like, hey, wait a minute here, you know, but.
Commercial's a little bit different because, commercial's a little bit different because of the the, they have toders, then they have the dumpsters, and they're all different sizes. They have different pickups per week, that's a, that's a beast within a beast.
Yeah, yeah, I got it, and I totally agree that, you know, things are going to have to go up, you know, and, you know, we're still within the ballpark of, you know, the people that are around, or the cities that are around us, you know, and, but, you know, I mean, and Jeremy, you know where I live, I, there're going to be like concessions for people with like three trees under, under yards. I totally agree with the mayor, and I do remember years ago that the leaf and limb pickup was only like three months of the year, and we adjusted to that, you know, or we lived by that, and then all of a sudden, it got to go year-round, you know, so, I don't know, you know, you know, we'll have to talk. You know, I, you know, because there are people that have, you know, corner lots and have a lot of trees, and they, they're going to have a lot of leaves, you know, and stuff like that. I mean, it'd be great if we could have a burn barrel, but that's a whole nother subject. So, okay, thank you. I was just curious about the the cost for the three different barrels.
So just to clarify on that, on the 90-gallon price that's going to be 2632, that includes all three cans?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, correct, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to comment on this item? All right, I'll bring it back to the council for direction or further discussion. I had one other question on item, page 23 of 36, under the residential pickup after Christmas. Is this something new, where they're going to provide two additional pickups? Or is that where the the Christmas tree is?
So the Christmas tree's in there, but that's nothing new, Mayor. That's been in place for years. We offer additional pickups after Christmas to take care of any additional Christmas waste.
At request.
So the Christmas tree's in there, but that's nothing new, mayor. That's been in place for years. We offer additional pickups after Christmas to take care of any additional Christmas waste.
At request? Because I don't, they don't, they don't just come by the neighborhood twice during that period.
If you were to call the office, we have, we have a handful of residents that take us up on the offer. But if you call the office, we call over to Bertolotti, and they do a pickup when they're out.
Okay, wow, I didn't know that we did that. Okay. All right, any other questions, comments, or direction? Mr. Westbrook.
Yeah, just had one thing to mention. A member of the Beautification Committee, I believe, sent an email to the council over the weekend suggesting that perhaps maybe in this rate adjustment, there could be some consideration for a code enforcement officer that could be funded through that. Jeremy and I just did kind of a ballpark number. And if the fee was increased around $1.05 to $1.10 per month, that could fully fund a code enforcement officer for the city. So just wanted to...
I can appreciate that, but I would want to defer to the city attorney. Can we legally do that? I thought when we charge for city services, we can only charge for the cost of that service. We can't bake anything else into that. Is that correct? We'd have to do it separately. We could not raise it and use that money for a code enforcement person. Is that what you're saying? Or that's what I thought? Yeah, yeah, okay. So I don't think we, I mean, it's a great idea, but unfortunately, we can't do that legally because I think, again, we can only charge for the actual cost of the service to us. We can't make money off of it and then use that to fund something else.
Yep, so just wanted to mention that because that had come in, so.
Sure. All right, any other questions? All right, I'll look for direction. So what you're looking for is a direction to move forward with the 218 vote. But I know there is a couple of questions that Jeremy needs to clarify. So do we take action on that, or do we wait until he comes back and then take action?
There'll be a formal public hearing notice, I believe, that will initiate the process next week at the next city council meeting.
Do it work out, the leaf and limb timeframe? Okay.
Correct.
Okay. Council, okay with that? Well, then I'll look for direction.
I'll make a motion to begin the public hearing process for the 218.
Hold a second. Do we have a motion in a second? Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit.
Hi.
Councilmember DeRocet.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay. Public hearing, we have one item, item number 11, consideration of the 2020-2021 fiscal year budget. I'll let Mr. Westbrook go through. I won't read the two resolutions until we get there, so.
Thank you, mayor, council members. So this evening, we're going to present the budget. This is kind of a continuation from the interim budget that was adopted on June 22, 2020. So we'll go through these slides, which may seem a little bit familiar to the council. And then they're here for the public's education as well. And as we move through, if there's any questions that you have, along the way, just stop me, and we can address those as we go. So our current fiscal year budget has been prepared. The beginning balance, the general fund balance, shows at 5.39 million. The projected revenues for this budget that has been prepared is 23.5 million, with projected expenses being 23.08 million. Gives us a projected fund balance at the end of next year at 5.86 million, kind of consistent with the city's councils' past practice. There has been usually a floor of 18% general fund in relation to the expenditures. This budget has 25.4%. And then just for your information, 1% equals about $231,000 of projected fund balance.
Now, Tom, if I can stop you right there, I got a question for you. You said to stop, we had, we had thing.
Yes, sir.
How did you come out with that 25.4%? And when I worked the math, I come up with 20%.
The 25%, you take the ending balance divided by the total expenditures.
Okay, which, now, that's exactly what I did. But if I take the total balance of 23,586, that does not include the beginning balance of 5,390. Because if I add the 21 and the, all the way down, it gets to 23.559. But then if I add the 5.3 starting balance in there, I come up with 28,949,787.
Okay.
So then I would take my, my ending balance and divide it into the 28,949, and I come up with 20%.
No, you take the ending balance and divide it into the total expenditures of 23,083.
Okay, and if you do that, you come up with 25. But doesn't the beginning balance of 5,390 come into play?
Yes.
Okay, so it comes into play, but then how come it's not included in the 23,559?
Well, the 23,559 is just our revenues that are coming in. The 5.39 million is the beginning balance. So it's just your, you know, your balance carried forward.
Correct, your balance is carried forward.
Right, you add in the revenues.
And I added in the revenue.
You take out the expenditures.
Okay, but what I'm saying is that 23,559 does not include your beginning balance. When I added it up, it does not include your beginning balance of 5.3.
That's, that's just the total of the revenues. It's the 5.3 plus the 23.5 minus the 23 million gives you the ending balance of...
So, so the 5.3 is part of the 21.19174? The 5.3 at the beginning balance is part of the revenue of 21.174?
No. No.
Okay.
That top portion is all revenues, the 21, the 673, the 1.5.
Right, but you also have a carryover of 5.3 million.
Right.
Okay, so why wouldn't you include that in the total?
You're talking about the subtotal.
Right, why wouldn't you include that in the subtotal revenue and transfer ends?
Right, okay, yeah, no, it's not part of the subtotal.
Well, then, okay, then if you do all that...
That's the subtotal of the revenues.
But, but, but what you're doing is you're including it in, in your reserves at the end of the year of 5.3. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So to me, looking at the thing as I am, that 5.39 should be included in your subtotal because your ending balance here is part of that 5.3. That's how I come up with 20%.
Okay. So your, your beginning balance plus your revenues would be 28 million.
Right, would be 28,949.
Minus your 23 million of expenditures.
Correct.
Equals your 5 million of reserves.
So then I took that and divided it into the 28.9, and I come up with 20%.
No, it's, the reserves is, it's reserves of expenditures, not of revenue. The percentage of the expenditures that you're going to say.
Yeah, but if you took what your expenditures was, is 23,883,256, and you take the other thing out of there, which, I mean, your, your revenue, your revenue is 23,559. Was that 389? 393 minus the 23,083,296. You've only got $476,097 left. And you don't have the 5 million dollars.
So that 476,000 is added to the reserves.
Right, but if you're going to add it to the reserves, then you got to add it to the front part too of the 23 million. You have to add it, you have to add it in there because that's part of the thing. Because to me, that's not apples to apples. I mean, that's the way I'm looking at it. Now, everybody else might disagree with me, but, but if you add it in the bottom, you should add it into the, into the top as part of the, part of the revenue. So, and I, and I think that same way with, with 21, 22, I mean, you know? But if I go back, I mean, we, we finished the year to me at 18% instead of the 22%. And same with next year, I finish at 20% instead of a 25.4% because that money's got to be counted somewhere. It can't be counted at the end. It should be, it's got to be counted in with what your income is. I mean, if I ask you how much your net worth was, and you said your net worth was $500,000, but you didn't count the $400,000 you had in your savings account? You know, I mean, that's, that's where, what you're really net worth. So, okay, that's where I stand, so go on. Tom, and this isn't anything new. We've always reported our, our reserves as a percent of our expenditures, correct?
That is correct.
So my math is just what you have here. I think 25.4% is what I get if I look at the projected expenses with the fund balance. So, I mean, maybe, maybe we report it a different way, but the way we've been reporting it, to be consistent with the years past, that this is how we've done it.
Correct.
I know when in the years past, I've always brought it up, how come they don't include, you know? It's like your checkbook. When you carry money over to next month, you include that into your revenue. You know, so, and we go through this every year. Yeah, okay. So I just think that we're, we're in the year 20% instead of 25%. So. Because you've got to use some of that, that last year's budget, you know, to offset what you're lacking in revenue, so. And I know, we, I've done this, we've done it every year, so. Go ahead, Tom.
The fiscal year 2021 projected revenues came in slightly below what we had projected in the June 22 budget. The projected expenses went slightly up. Essentially, what that was, was including the payment for the fire apparatus was the, was the slight increase. We do expect with this budget, as was indicated, to add $476,000 to the reserves this year. Big picture view, revenues were a little bit less. Actually, they were a little less than we had projected, but they were slightly above what the previous year. Same thing with the revenues. The expenditure forecast for the coming fiscal year includes salary increases per the MOU with the city. There was a few additional positions that were added. Retirement and healthcare costs increased. One of the things that we had not included in the June 22 budget, which we have now included, were some fundings related to the CARES Act. It's anticipated the city will get $2.2 million in CARES Act funding. To date, we've received 1.2 million of that, and it's in our accounts currently.
Okay, so I have a question, Mr. Westbrook. If we know that, well, let me go back. CARES Act funding is really just a bonus. It's not going to be here every year, correct?
As far as we...
I, I look at it as a bonus. It's a one-time thing, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So I don't think we should balance our budget based on a bonus. That's my personal belief. And we also know that this coming year, we're going to be having negotiations with the cannabis development agreements, correct?
Correct.
And they will want to be giving us less, so that's going to impact this as well, correct?
So one of the things we, for one of the agreements specifically, we've taken that to the Planning Commission. It's scheduled for the city council at your next meeting. There was a slight reduction in the overall cost. But pursuant to what the Planning Commission authorized and we're moving forward with, it's actually an increase in what we had actually budgeted. We selected the expiration date of that agreement and dropped it all the way down to the floor. So we're actually going to be adding, getting a little bit more revenue for the cannabis DA than we actually originally projected.
That's for, that's for one of the DAs, not all of them.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Budget process starts back in February with the creation of internal service funds, building maintenance fleet and IT. In addition, with all the fixed costs, the departments create them. The departmental budget creation, the finance department compiles all of those, and then the city manager review. So this is changes in revenues and expenditures. You can see kind of on the column on the right is the projected draft budget. Shows that the revenues are slightly exceed expenditures. That's due in part through the CARES Act funding that will be received. You can see the 2019-2010 actuals, the expenditures were actually a little bit above the revenue. Another slide just illustrating our overall revenue in the general fund as it relates to salary and benefits, and then other funds that those, that revenue pays for. Sales tax, you can see on the right column, the draft budget includes 6.8 million in sales tax revenue. The actuals that we received towards the end of last month, we got the, those revenues in for the previous year. There was just over $7 million in sales tax that the city received. But we're being a little bit conservative in the upcoming budget and ratcheting that number back just a little bit. Wrong button, sorry. This is secured property tax. Again, this is just a nominal increase. It was, actually, the property tax went down just a little bit over the previous year. It actually went up just a little bit over the previous year. We're anticipating that it'll go up just a bit next year as well. Motor vehicle and Luffy, the actuals were just slightly above the 2018-19 timeframe. We're projecting a continued trend up just above what we received this year in the actuals. Here's the cannabis development agreements. So we're anticipating in this 2021 budget that we would receive 1.5 million in revenue from the development agreements.
There's no projections for the 21, 22?
For development agreements?
Yeah.
Not at this point in time. Other revenue sources in the future. We use a lot of our projections based upon a county services forecast. That obviously, future growth, future recession and pandemic. As I mentioned, the development agreement terms, two of those development agreements are up for renewal this year. And then commercial development at Service &amp; Mitchell. So when that starts, that's going to be a bonus to our city.
But should we even be thinking in terms of the commercial development at Service &amp; Mitchell? Because there's no guarantee. It's like when, it's like when I worked in planning. Initially, I would get really excited when tire kickers would come in and say, oh, we're going to build this, we're going to build that. And I finally learned I don't get excited until I can walk in with my credit card. So I think that's the same thing, that let's hope that it happens, but we certainly can't look at the coming years thinking that we're going to have an increase in sales tax.
Agree 100%. This is just more of activity, development activity. Hopefully, we'll be seeing it in this coming year. Changes made since the June 22 interim budget was adopted. As I mentioned, some of the CARES Act funding has been added. Additionally, we added some $67,000 to HR budget for future negotiations. Um, additionally, we, uh, added some, uh, sixty seven thousand dollars to HR budget for future nego, negotiations. Uh, and then due to the pandemic, we, uh, reduced some of the revenue projections for the community center.
So we're going to hire someone to do negotiations this year?
What's that?
We're going to be hiring someone to do negotiations, is that what the sixty seven thousand?
That would be, that would be for outside legal, uh, services to help in the negotiation process, yes.
But you wanna hire an HR director?
Correct.
But you don't want your HR director to take that on instead of sixty seven thousand dollars?
At this point, don't know the, the, uh, the experience that the HR director will have, um, certainly if we can do it in-house, we'd like to do that. This was just kind of a fallback position and if, depending upon who is ultimately hired. And then we cleaned up and finalized the budget. So here's the, uh, general fund projection, uh, spreadsheet. This shows the, uh, the beginning budgetary balance of five point three million. It shows the revenues in, um, some of the development agreement revenues, et cetera, showing the subtotal at twenty three point five million. You can see below that, um, there are salaries, retirement, workman's comp, group insurance, those are expenditures that come from the general fund. Um, in addition to that, the CARES Act funding has been included in the, uh, in, in this general fund slide. Um, additionally, as the council is aware, there was a number of positions that were frozen at that June twenty second meeting. Those have resulted to date in a savings of about four hundred and sixty three thousand dollars in the general fund. And then kind of those cascade in, um, they roughly, about seventy five thousand dollars every two weeks is saved into the general fund as a result of those positions being vacant. Vacant, there is also a recommendation to keep six, uh, funded but unfilled positions kind of frozen. That would result in four hundred and thirty two thousand dollars in savings through the end of the year. Which shows your total expenditures at twenty, a little over twenty three, um, uh, million dollars. So therefore, we have a, um, adding the four hundred and seventy six thousand dollars to the, uh, to the reserves for a total reserve balance of five point eight million, uh, one of the things that I would like to note is um, there's been conversations that staffs had with, uh, the folks at Stanislaus County, and we understand that they'll be adopting their budget. And I believe at their meeting on September twenty second. Isn't expected and anticipated, when the CARES Act funding was originally given, uh, kind of to the cities allocated, series was scheduled to get around one point six million dollars. As the state, uh, allocated some CARES Act fundings to all of the cities within the state. Um, Stanislaus County kind of pulled back and said, hey, you're going to get some allocation from the state, so we're gonna withhold that, um, that equivalent amount from you, which is around six hundred thousand dollars until the time that we're going to adopt our budget to make sure that we're okay. Um, staff expects that the county will adopt their budget, and the likelihood is extremely high that some of those additional CARES Act fundings would be released to the cities. In that case, we've, we've included that right into this year's budget. Um, which would allow us to add to our reserve total, um, in the amount of four hundred and seventy six thousand dollars.
I have a couple of questions. The eleven point six mil for salaries, does that include the twenty positions that you're proposing to fill?
Yes, the, 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 then, that essentially, that amount includes, it's a worst-case scenario, it includes all the positions.
All of the positions?
Yep.
Okay, and so the savings from funded but unfilled positions, does that take into consideration the temporary employees that we hired?
Temporary employees.
Didn't we hire temporary employees, like, is sec, is there a secretary that we hired temporarily?
I believe that number would account for all of that, the temporary salaries.
It's included? Okay. I've been on the council for seven years now, and I think probably you're all, you've all heard me say how often that we need to live within our means, we need, if we have a certain dollar amount in our revenues, our expenditures cannot be more than that. It's just like our budget at home, we shouldn't be spending more than we're bringing in. And I think in the seven years, we've probably actually achieved that, maybe two times. But when I look at the proposed twenty twenty, twenty one, if you take out those one-time bonus monies such as the CARES Act funding and the savings from the two different columns for the savings. It looks like we are spending two point seven more than we're bringing in. If you, if you take those one-time monies out, and I don't think that we should look at those as our saving grace, because if we we're not gonna have that money next year, and again, we truly are not balancing our budget, we may have a twenty five point four percent reserve, but we still haven't learned how to live within our means, and I think at some point, like I say every year, we need to do that, we, we, we just can't continue picking that can down the road. That's my concern again, that we aren't living within our means.
Okay, moving to the next slide, um, so Measure H. Ten police officers, seven firefighters slash engineers, there's some expenditures. Fire apparatus, equipment loan repayment, tools and equipment, some body worn maintenance, some MDC radios. There was a slight decrease in revenues projected for the next fiscal year. Um, but actually, the actuals that we just received showed a modest increase in the, uh, revenues from the two thousand nineteen, twenty, um, timeframe. Any questions specifically on this slide? So summary of the expenditures, uh, again, the draft total is twenty three point oh eight million, personnel cost of that are seventy three percent or seventeen million. When you add Measure H to the total expenditures, it's about twenty eight million dollars. The public safety, uh, PD, fire code enforcement, animal control with Measure H is pro, approximately eighty percent of our general fund, uh, and Measure H budgets. So for this year, there were discussions of adding four positions, uh, a deputy city clerk, one dispatcher, one associate engineer, and one engineering technician.
Um, why would we add positions just to freeze them? I don't understand that.
I think for the, uh, the one of, of these four, the one that was recommended to add that would be frozen for consideration would be the deputy city clerk. The other three, we, uh, would recommend to move forward with.
But, but what I don't understand is, why do we add a position and then freeze it? Why, why, why do we not just wait until we're ready to hire that position? To me, that, to me, that's not being really transparent, it's like it, it doesn't make sense to me.
I think we were just hopefully going to include that into the budget, and then at the mid-year, if we were in a different position where we could hire those back, it would be a position that was in the budget already.
But couldn't we just have that discussion mid-year instead of, you, you know, it's like you and I talked earlier, that one spreadsheet, it's really confusing because it says all of these positions are approved, but yet, how many are really funded? And I know it's two different things, but it just doesn't make sense to me to add a position and then immediately freeze it.
If the council's desire to
Budget.
To not include it, we could.
I, I don't know, I, I'm just curious why we do that.
And, and I, I would have tendency to agree with Vice Mayor Rhino on that. You know, it looked, to me, it looks bad when you have a position, but then it's frozen. Why can't you fund it? So if we decide to add the position and put it on the books, I think we're, 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 we, we're in a better situation and we look better as a city to come back and maybe add it as a position when we can, instead of having it on the books as frozen. Councilmember Condon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, I would make, uh, the motion to not add that position if I can get a second.
Say that again?
Of what, uh, Vice Mayor recommended to not.
You, 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 what you're saying is that we shouldn't approve one just to turn around and freeze it.
Sure, yes, on those positions that we, that is in consideration, I would make the motion to do exactly that.
Are we taking motion?
Well, yeah, I mean, he can, he can make a motion enough, I'm hearing, because I, I think what he's saying is the policy direction that we would give them moving forward, if we, if we don't want those positions funded at this time, is we don't list them as frozen and then funded in the future. I mean, I, I kind of look at it a little bit di- differently than you made this statement, it doesn't look transparent. I, I could argue, well, it looks really transparent because they're not hiding positions, they're telling us what they believe is needed to run the city, and we can't hire them now because they're frozen because we don't have the funding for it. I, it doesn't matter to me whether they have them frozen or not, and I don't have a problem if we wanna not continue down that path of doing it. Um, and I can understand that hi- hi- his request is to change the policy of the way that we've always done it, and that's okay, it doesn't, it doesn't matter to me. Um, but, but I think, um, that's what he's, yeah, that's what you're asking for, Councilmember.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
So that, uh, he has provided a, a motion, we can go through this, or, or, at this point, let's do this. Let's see if there's a second, and if there is a second, then we'll, we'll set that aside until we get to that point of the decision on everything, but he does have a motion on the floor, and so we do need to recognize that.
And, and Mr. Mayor, if you would like me to hold my motions until the end, I'm more than.
It doesn't matter.
Okay.
We can do either one.
Okay.
I would second that.
Okay, so we do have that, we do have that on, on.
I have a question though.
Yes.
Uh, we're only talking about new positions that are being brought up, right? We're not talking about the two firefighter positions that are being frozen.
But I, I do have a, a question, it lines with you, have Councilmember Drossit, for clarification, we're only talking about the deputy city clerk.
No, I think he was talking about all positions that we would freeze, but I don't want.
Oh, I thought because of what, what Vice Mayor Rhino may were talking about, he made the motion. And that's why I'm asking for clarification if it is just on the deputy city clerk that's not listed right now, that we're asking not to be listed.
Yeah, my, my motion was to that point, that it's not being listed.
Just the deputy city clerk.
It needs to be, I agree that it needs to be listed for transparency, I would agree with that.
But just that one position?
Yes, the other ones were, have been listed.
Were what?
The other ones have been, uh, listed.
Right, the other ones are listed, but the deputy city clerk, so you're only talking about the deputy city clerk not being listed?
I understood the argument, yes, for transparency's sake, yes.
To go to Councilmember Drossit, no, it's not the firefighters, anything like that, the interpretation is just the deputy city clerk's position.
Because it's a new funding, and that's what caught my eye, that why are we basically creating it and then immediately turning around and freezing it?
We can have some more discussion on this when we get to that, that item, so, okay, keep going, Tom.
So currently, at the time I drafted these slides, there was twenty eight positions total, there's actually a couple more that have been, uh, added today, they're not included in your list. They were budgeted positions, so I really wanted to focus on these positions. Um, that, those, those positions are five police officers, one dispatcher, three firefighters, code enforcement secretary, water resource analyst, a water operator, wastewater operator, fleet mechanic, custodian, park maintenance worker, a part-time parts ma- maintenance worker, IT analyst, HR director, HR analyst, deputy finance director, admin secretary, deputy city clerk, um, the recreation supervisor, associate engineer, um, and then two engineering techs, and the director of community develop. My recommendation would be to consider hiring twenty of those vacant positions. Wastewater operator, the water operator, the fleet mechanic, one, the custodian, park maintenance worker, IT analyst, HR director, HR analyst, the firefighters, time, three positions, police officer, time is five positions, administrative secretary, gonna kind of split those duties with the code enforcement secretary. A dispatcher, an associate engineer, an engineering technician. Um, again, if we hired all the positions, we would still have our reserve balance of five point eight six million. Some of the positions that I would consider freezing at this point in time would be the code enforcement secretary, the part-times, uh, part-time, part-maintenance worker, the director of community development, the deputy finance director, uh, the deputy city clerk, which may not be in the budget at all, um, and the recreation supervisor. And then the recommendation was to revisit those positions at the mid-year budget. Continuing, continuing challenges, uh, Fund Two Seventy Five, the community center. Fund Two Ninety Two, the landscape and lighting district, um, opportunities, as I mentioned, the CARES Act funding, two point two million has been allocated to series and has been included in this proposed budget. So at this point, looking, um, to answer any questions the council has, um, talk about the next step would be the adoption of the final budget. And then for any positions that we get approved, uh, begin recruitment processes for those.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Condon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, yes, Mr. City Manager, I just have a few questions and, uh, for clarification as well. And, um, I'll also, I'll make my motions again, uh, towards the end of my questioning. Uh, but I, I noticed an increase in expenditures, uh, primarily in the CIP account department ninety five. Uh, can you kind of explain, uh, how we've managed those increases and how they came about and also what they're used for specifically?
Yes, uh, CIP projects are capital improvement projects, primarily paid by the water sewer accounts. Um, addition to other grant sources that we get, um, uh, in addition to taxes. Some of the increases that we had seen in the CIP project list, uh, are related to the surface water project. Some of the conveyance systems, there's a tank at River Bluff Regional Park, so those are some of the big ticket items that were included in our, uh, CIP budget.
And also on the public safety positions, um, I guess, uh, can you speak to the responsibilities of both the, the firefighters as well as the police officers that are coming, or, or being unfrozen?
Come again?
I'm sorry, uh, can you speak about the responsibilities, I guess, are, will, are these gonna be patrol officers that are gonna be on the streets, or?
So the, so the positions that, um, um, generally, um, this organization does a very good job of promoting from within. Um, so the positions for the firefighters would be three entry-level positions, fire, firemen. Um, in addition to the police officers, there would be police officers patrolling the streets, so if there was a vacancy in the police department at an upper position, somebody from the existing patrol would be, uh, uh, would be elevated, and then somebody would be hired to backfill that position.
Okay, and I also noticed that a sergeant, uh, position is recommended as well?
Sergeant position's already vacant, so we're recommending to hire, uh, five patrol officers.
Okay, and, uh, so the community se- center is still not being reflective whatsoever in the general fund?
That is correct.
Okay, and that has Big Valley, I mean, we've, we've entered this contract with Big Valley, has that chipped away at some of that debt, have we made some progress there?
It certainly helps, um, I think that the pandemic had, uh, uh, kind of a damper on that, um, process overall. Uh, but having Big Valley Grace as a partner, uh, in the community center has been a benefit to the city for sure.
Do we know our current deficit on the building?
I think we're currently about one point seven million.
One point seven, okay, and, uh, well, as I have done in the past budgets, I, I would make a motion that Two Seventy Five is reflective in the, in the general fund. And also on top of that, uh, I do think that the council should consider relinquishing their healthcare insurance in order to pay down that deficit for a ten-year span. Um, you know, the CARES Act, i- it's a relief system, it's not a bonus. It's a, it's for the pandemic, to address the needs of the pandemic, so it's certainly not a bonus. But the healthcare insurance for the city council is. And I do think that it would be wise of us to consider paying down, uh, Two Seventy Five by using our healthcare, so I have two motions on the floor, and I'd hope to have a second.
The last one, just for clarification, the last one was to put the Two Seventy Five into the general fund.
Yes, sir.
And then have the benefits of the council, um, removed or, or no longer provided.
To set those aside in order to pay down the deficit, and it's the same motion I've made, uh, previously.
Just for clarification, Mr. Westbrook, how, how much of that, of the city council benefits would, could be used for, um, paying down the debt on the?
I believe that the benefits are right around a hundred thousand dollars a year, um, for the council, and those are paid for kind of a, a third, third and a third through the general fund, water account and sewer account, so, uh, roughly thirty three percent of those. water account and sewer account, so, uh, roughly 33% of those.
So roughly $33,000 a year?
Could be, uh, could be paid back to the community center, correct?
Okay, and it was 1.7 million, so take quite a few years on that one, okay? Okay, but we have that motion, um. Okay, uh, Councilmember Klein?
You know, Westbrook, you know, I look at this thing and, and the positions that are frozen, and I understand the, I understand the need for all of them. And, you know, I look at this thing and the, and the CARES Act, uh, relief, uh, fund is going to help us and help build up our reserves for this year, but my concern was, you know, what would these salaries do and how much the impact if we add those positions to the 21, 22 budget and the 22, 23 budget? Because I believe that, you know, a few years back, this council set a threshold of 18% for, uh, for our reserves. And if we continue down this path, you know, 21, 22 would go, I believe, lower than the 17% projected. And we projected we'd only want 18%. So the difference would have to be made up in next year's, the following year's budget. And if you look in 22, 23, we're, we're projected at 14.8%, so that's almost another 4% you got to pick up there. Then I believe that it's going to be a little difficult, not knowing what the projected revenues are for, uh, the Gateway Center and the other things like that. So, you know, I'd be real hesitant and, and, and look at you and say, okay, what would we need for 21, 22 to get us to our 18%? And then, uh, you know, decide what positions can be, uh, filled and what, which ones have to be frozen. Because, you know, uh, you know what we need to u- run the city? But we know as a council that we'd like to stay at 18%. So, you know, I think that, uh, that would go back on, the burden onto you.
Okay, Vice Mayor Rhino?
On the staff report, Mr. Westbrook, I have a question that positions proposed to be filled. You have administrative secretary slash code enforcement secretary. And then position proposed to be frozen is code enforcement secretary. My question is, if you want to fill the administrative secretary slash code enforcement secretary, how could you do that when those are two different titles? A secretary is a different title than an administrative secretary.
Uh, just trying to be creative to get assistance, uh, throughout the city. I don't really have an answer as to the two different job titles.
Okay, because I thought when we had our goal setting that we did talk about the city clerk needing help. So when I saw the deputy city clerk, that surprised me because I thought, excuse me, we had talked about maybe splitting the, um, a secretary position with part-time city clerk and part-time finance secretary. I don't recall any talk about a deputy city clerk, which I'm, I'm okay with splitting it that way. And then for the fire secretary, why couldn't that be 50/50 with code enforcement secretary? And then that way you're getting coverage for your city clerk as well.
Just haven't explored that option at this point.
Okay. When I look at the list of approved positions, I see that we have, um, two code enforcement officers, but it doesn't show a code enforcement supervisor. But yet, I think we have that job title floating around. And in fact, we might have someone working in that capacity right now, which I don't agree with. If you have two code enforcement officers, that one should be a supervisor, but I don't see it listed here. So I'm wondering how you can even have someone be a supervisor if this is supposed to be the list of all of the approved titles. And then I'm going to go back to my comment about living within our means. I don't see how we can hire or, or fill 20 positions and stay within our budget, which is within our revenues. I'm not saying we shouldn't fill some of them because, I mean, I think it's important that we fill the police officers and um, the firefighters because, uh, public safety, we need to do that. But I don't know that we need to have an HR director and an HR analyst. I mean, it seems to me that you pick one or the other, but we can't get everything that we want, I, I don't think. Because it may look good that we say we can afford them this year, but we have to look at the years down the road. And how are we going to pay for them? I, I, I don't see how we're going to. We're going to have negotiations next year, so let's fill 20 positions and then when our employees come to us and they say, hey, we want to, we want to raise. We've been working really har- hard, and we're going to say, we don't have money for you because we just hired 20 new people. I, I think if we're going to do any hires, that we need to look at the list. And again, I think public safety is very important, but I certainly don't think that we can afford to hire 20 positions. And that would be my only comment.
Councilmember Drossit?
Yeah, um, just kind of looking at this and obviously understanding that, you know, COVID, how everything came to kind of fruition and, and where we're at financially, I mean, I thought it would be a lot worse off financially. And we don't know what next year has to hold, and I, I agree with Councilwoman Rhino that, you know, public safety is very important. I know the last time that you brought the budget to us, and I think I was one of the only ones that said that, you know, we had one police officer and one firefighter that had left and, or retired, and we didn't hire for those positions. And so I think we have to hire those absolutely today. Can't do that today. I think that, and again, uh, Chief Collins, don't take this wrong, I know we just hired two dis- two dispatchers, right? And the dispatcher comes completely out of general fund, and I don't know if we can get by with only not, not hiring another one at this present time, just trying to break this list apart. But, oh, this question. An answer, I hope.
We just had another one resign over the weekend, so we need that position.
Okay, well then, I'd be all for that. You know, if you notice our parks, I know Councilman Rhino had many times shared with us how bad the parks were. And we're two guys short, I think, working at the parks, isn't that correct, Mr. Thomas? Yes? Um, and again, we have money at this present time, will we have money at the, the following year, you know? I, I think all the positions that don't have a general fund dollar figure, we hire immediately. So you have water resource analyst, water operator, wastewater operator, uh, associate engineer, engineer tech one and two. A side question, are we still negotiating with the POA?
Um, not at this current time. Uh, I believe that their contracts extended through December. I think that the, uh, direction provided by council was to wait until September before we engaged again.
Okay, so I don't know, maybe we, we don't hire five police officers, maybe cross that bridge and maybe that's part of the process in regards to, you know, what their needs are. I think one of the biggest things we need to start trying to do is retain some of our officers, so we don't have them leak out of the city series and go elsewhere where there's more money. But that's a whole nother issue, I'm sure. You know, th- this is kind of a, 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 a great Christmas wish list, and it, it looks great, Tom. And, you know, there's a lot of things that I, I think we can probably do. I, I don't know if necessarily we can make all those decisions today because of what the costs are actually going to be, you know? Um, I think maybe it has to come back to us one more time in regards to exactly what are we going to want to hire? And what's that cost going to look like? I don't know, or maybe we can do that this evening. I might have some more in a little bit, but I'm done.
Councilmember Condon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would echo the comments of my colleagues. I do think we need to prioritize these public safety positions. I also would agree with Councilman Drossit that we should consider, um, possibly, uh, trying to enter, re-enter into negotiations, whether it's, uh, through a creative way or, uh, possibly trying to use, uh, some of the CARES Act funding for that. Um, but I, I, I would be open to exploring, uh, not hiring all the positions or filling all the positions, but ke- keeping a focus on the public safety, um, positions in total. I would be definitely open to that if, uh, that the council would agree.
Okay, um, in a minute here, I'll, I'm going to open it up for the public to speak, so if anybody wants to speak, um, please get ready for that. So, um, a couple of comments I have, you know, I think a few months back when we sat here, we indicated that we wanted to see what kind of funding we were going to get from the federal and state government to help get us through the pandemic. And now we have money that has been earmarked for it. And we're saying we don't necessarily want to spend it on the positions that, I think, the city manager and staff are telling us that we need. I'm okay with the recommendation of, I think, the 20 positions that the city manager has indicated. I mean, I've been doing this a long time, and if you think that you're going to get to a point where you have everything that balances based on upcoming projections, you'll never get there. I, I, I kind of use this as analogy of a property appraiser. They have to take a look at things at that specific time and moment. And what's the property worth at that value of time? Not a year from now, not six months prior, but exactly at that time. And that's very similar to what we have here. We know what the costs are, we know what our budget is, we know what is coming in. And we need to provide these services if things go south as we're projecting they might, then we have to make the tough decisions and downsize or re-engineer or right-size, whatever term you want to call it. But we were given this money to help us through the situation, and I, I don't think we just pocket it and move on. Um, I, I, I believe we need the positions. I, I believe public safety is, you know, my number one priority, and I believe that we need to spend it, um, on those positions. Um, I know the city manager is wearing multiple hats right now, and I know that we have upcoming requirements for housing elements and everything else, and, um, and, and we need people to provide those services. So m- my opinion is, uh, we, we have the money. Um, I think the city manager is saying that even with those positions, we still will have a reserve. Um, and, uh, and then, and then a year from now, if doomsday is hit, then you address it at that point. But my feeling is that I, I, I think we need to use some of that, that funding, uh, or it's been, or we've been a little bit disingenuous to those that provided us with, with those funds. So that's just my comments. Um, so at this time, I wanted to open up to see if anyone in the audience would like to, uh, speak on the budget. Uh, the first person I see, uh, is Maria. I'd like to take your comments if you'd like. It looks like the hand got removed, so I'm not sure if she still wants to speak or she hasn't.
Yes, can you hear me?
Okay, yes.
Hi, I'm playing again. Um, yes, um, we're concerned in the budget. I do agree with us having two, um, dispatchers available. Um, I agree with that in case, you know, once on the line, there's another call coming in, we need to have two available to answer. Um, sometimes when I call, can't get through. So, yeah, I agree with that. Um, we need to, I agree with, uh, Vice Mayor that we can't spend more than we have. I agree with that, being a single mother, always try to make ends meet, and we need to be careful. Um, I have another question, has nothing to do with the budget, real quick. I'm new, um, first time attending this, uh, city council meeting in CERES. I have attended meetings in Modesto. Um, regarding the situation with COVID right now. The residents in CERES, not only in CERES, everywhere else in the United States, I'm sure, um, having issues trying to pay their bills. I'm, I've been able to keep up with my mortgage, thanks to, thanks to the Lord. Uh, but when my unemployment got reduced by $600 a week, we're not getting that extra money anymore. I'm only getting $2.45 a week. Can you imagine? How am I going to make it? So now I was able to keep up with my City of CERES utility bill and my electric TID bill until they stopped giving me this money about a month ago, a little bit more, a month ago. I was falling a little bit behind, but I was trying to keep up, trying to keep up, and now I'm like way so behind. My question is, what are you guys, what do you have to offer city residents with this? Um, are you going to turn off our utility bills if we are not able? I know I've spoken to your, um, staff. Regarding my bills, telling them I haven't been able, but I'm going to try and make a big payment. I don't know, it's really hard, but, um, I need to make a payment on both. Um, how are you guys helping us? Um, is there any help or you, the COVID money can use, use that for residents? For example, myself, low income, trying to make ends meet. I have to, I have, I don't get food stamps, I get no kind of assistance, I don't qualify. Um, I am feeding my child with the school lunches. I have, I'm saving all the apples, everything they give us. Nothing is going to waste, try to make ends meet to feed him. How are you guys providing, can you guys provide, use that COVID money for people like me? Um, that's my question, you know, I don't know, you guys can think about it in the next meeting or something. But you guys have to offer to help residents like me, my bills right now are almost $1,000 each. I don't know if you see it, they're right here, this is my TID. Almost $1,900, something, $950.4 cents. And I'm at $904 for my City of CERES, I'm telling you, my bills are like $250 a month for my water. I don't know, I understand, maybe I have, uh, water leaking, I don't know. Um, but I was, that's just a question of mine, a concern and a question. Um, also regarding the roads, speed bumps, I was wondering, how do I petition to get speed bumps? Where I live on 10th Street, people drive so fast, my kids can't play on the road. It's about the only road in CERES that I see that no kids can play on the road. Everywhere else I drive, the street behind me, Ramon via Ramon, no car.
Maria, can, can I have your comments kind of, um, focused on the budget? Um, that, that's another subject.
Yeah, we can talk about that next time, but I just wanted to bring it up. How can I, well, I mean, where can I go? I, I just need to be directed, so I just want to be able to help around here where I live at, make things better for people. Um, so that's, that's all, that's all my questions. I have nothing else right now. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Brandt?
Your mic is unmuted, Mr. Brandt.
Yeah, I, uh, I tend to agree with, uh, Vice Mayor Rhino about living within our means. I mean, you know, we have to do that, you know, because otherwise, you know, we have no means. Uh, and then Vice Mayor has been saying that for seven years now. Uh, and then on, just kind of on a personal note, I would like to thank, you know, uh, the Zoom meetings because I'm able to see all the charts and all this stuff, because when we attended the meetings live and in person, we could never read those crazy things, you know? Uh, but I know it's, it's a real inconvenience, you know, having our meetings this way, but I sure like having them charts where I can read them. So that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Joseph, is it Spanny?
Yeah.
Your mic is unmuted.
Yeah, Joe Spanny from CERES Firefighters Local 3636. Uh, I think the mayor, you kind of hit it on the head in terms of we need to make sure that we fully staff our, or staff the public safety to the ability that we can using the CARES Act money. Um, with the 20 positions that Mr. Westbrook's looking to add to our current budget. With the 20 positions that Mr. Westbrook's looking to add to our current budget, he's still able to increase our reserves up 7.4% above the 18% mandate that the council has set in previous years. The fire department absolutely needs to be able to, to fill the vacancies that we have, just like PD does. Making sure that we can fill those vacancies is going to make sure that we can actually cut down on some of our overtime money while fully staffing the department as it needs to be done.
Okay. All right. Okay. So at this time, have you received any comments or emails?
No email, emails, Mears.
Okay. I'll bring it back to the council. Councilmember Condit?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I did have a motion and a second on the one present position. And then I also have a couple more motions if we want to take that one first.
Okay. Councilmember Klein?
You know, I was, just wanted to make a comment, you know, of what was said is because, you know, I mean, yes, I do understand we're 25%. When we set a threshold of, of 18, we're 7% the way we're going to finish up. But we also have to take into consideration what we're going to do at the end of 21, 22 and, and in the future. You know, that CARES Act money is a one-time shot. So with hiring all these positions, what are we going to be doing in the next year? You know, I, I took under consideration what the mayor said and what, what the vice mayor said. And, you know, I come up with a, with a happy medium. For me, it would be, you know, eight, eight positions that, that affect the general fund and four of them that, that are non-general fund funded. That, you know, I'd be willing to explore. HR Director, three police officers. And I say three firefighters because we had one firefighter retire today. So now we have four. We have four that are, or five of them that are basically vacant. A community, community development director with, you know, the Gateway Center coming in, we need somebody. IT analyst. So, you know, I, I say, I'd be, I'd be willing to look at those, those eight general fund funded and the, the four non, non-general funded, which would give him 12 out of his 20.
Was I a motion?
No, it's not a motion, much my comment, because, you know, Councilman Condit was talking about, he wanted to go through with his motions, but I wanted to make that comment first. So.
Okay, so we have two motions on the floor by Councilmember Condit. Those kind of go hand in hand with the adoption of the positions. So I guess what it was, we can, we can address those two items. And then I'll look for direction on the staffing level on the budget. So the first item was to, and I just want clarification to make sure I get it right.
Sure.
Remove the freeze designation policy for just the one position for any of the ones that they want.
Just the one that was mentioned.
Oh, just the one. Okay.
Yes, sir.
So we have that motion. Do we have a second? She, she, oh, you second, sorry. Yeah, we did. We have a motion and a second. So can we have the roll call vote on that one item, please?
Councilmember Condit?
Aye.
Councilmember DeRocette?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
And Mayor Viera?
Uh, yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, then the second one, and I don't know if we have a second on this one yet. This one is to move Fund 275 into the general fund.
Yes.
And then, um, do you want the, the next one tied to it or separate?
We can do it separate, whatever is easiest. But to clarify on that, it, it is $100,000 annual for health insurance, and that would be put towards the community center.
Well, no, only, only 33,000 can, of that 100 grand can be used for the community center. The other two-thirds can't.
Can you clarify why the two-thirds?
Their water and sewer account funds.
Water and sewer accounts. Well, essentially, you could, if you relinquish the 100 grand, you could put it towards something else. It's still $100,000 annual.
The water and sewer money would stay in the water and sewer.
It would stay. Well, maybe we can potentially look at lowering rates. I know our rates have been raising. I'm just saying you can use that money elsewhere, whether you can be creative with that. You don't, it is $100,000. You can take 33 and put it towards the community center, and you can take the remainder and put it towards something else, such as lowering water rates and helping folks out like Ms. Castillo. That's, that would be my point, and that would be my second motion.
But you want to, you want to do those as two separate ones, though, right?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. And then my third would be about the HR negotiator. I would make a motion to remove that. You know, I, I think that if we were going to hire HR position, it should probably be handled there. And I also think our city attorney could also be competent in handling those negotiations as well.
Okay, so the first, the first of those two is to move fund, and it's referred to as Fund 275?
275.
Line item 275 fund?
Yeah, it's Fund 275.
Fund 275 into the general fund. Have that motion.
I have, I have a question. So it's not, is it to move it into the general fund or to actually start showing it as part of the budget?
We need to, we need to have it reflective of our budget. It is a deficit, and I would like to have it reflective. I know we've had this discussion in the past.
And I would second that.
I think, but it's already in the general fund, but it's not reported in the, is that correct? It's a separate fund. Okay.
And is, is there any reason that it cannot be shown like all of our other accounts? So we actually know that our budget is taking that hit instead of it not showing up?
No, it can be moved into the general fund. It just has to be direction.
Okay, I would second that.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. And before I call for the vote on that. So then obviously the reserve is going to go down, and it may be a negative, correct?
Correct.
But if that occurs, my biggest fear always has been with, with the reserve. When we get to the end of the year and we're waiting for the property taxes to come in from the county, that we have enough funds available to meet our obligations of payroll and other things without necessarily borrowing from of our other enterprise funds. In this case, does that lock up that money even though it's a debt? Or are we still able to utilize the money we have? All it's really doing is moving into the general fund, but the, the obligation, I mean, showing it's an obligation.
So it's going to, it's going to reduce the amount of reserves that you have. It's going to reduce your ending balance.
So does that mean at that point it would trigger that we would have to borrow from the other accounts?
Yeah, if there wasn't enough to cover, the expenses at the end of the year, yes.
But Mayor, that has happened to us before without having the community center shown here. It happened to us at least once since I've been on the council that we had to do that because of waiting for money to come in and our ending balance wasn't.
It was, it was too low.
It was too low. So even with, with, without doing this, we still had that problem is what I'm trying to say. I'm not saying that. I, I don't know how to explain what I'm trying to say.
I, I understand what you're saying.
I mean, I don't want, I don't want, it, it almost sounds like you're saying by doing that, that's going to happen, but it happened anyway.
I'm just asking the question. I, I, I just want to make sure. I mean, it's a debt's a debt. I understand that, and it doesn't really matter where it is. But I don't want to trip a situation like that, and then we have to deal with, or you have to deal with, because I won't be around when that happens. But, but that, they answered my question. So we have a motion and a second.
I have a question. So this whole budget is, is void if we do that.
Well, no, you just have to pull $1.7 million down in, in there. I'm just going to drop everything down, $1.7 million.
Right. Which is going to put our reserve balance around 18%.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Can we have the call vote?
Councilmember Condit?
Aye.
Councilmember DeRocette?
No.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
No.
And Mayor Viera?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, and then the next item is to have the, the motion on the floor is for the council to
relinquish the.
No longer take or give up their benefits and have the funding for that go to.
A portion to the community center, the other portion could be supplemented. Yeah, whatever we're able to do, and we can have that discussion later if it passes.
Okay. Any comments on this before I'll call for a second? My only comment would be to it is, and, and this is, it's kind of difficult for me because obviously I'm not going to be around beyond this term. And anything that we do now takes effect at the next election. So it doesn't affect me personally, but I feel like I think this is a discussion better served for the incoming council because it will impact them. And I don't necessarily want to be voting on something that impacts them as I'm on my way out, because again, it doesn't affect me. But I, I, I think me personally, I think it's, it's, it should be better addressed by the incoming council who, right now, I mean, I, I mean, I haven't spoken with any of the candidates, but perhaps there are some that are running, you know, because they, they, they get compensated for doing it, and they don't want to do it for free or something along those, and, and I can't speak for them. It's just me personally. I think it's a discussion for those that will be impacted by it, not myself. So with that.
All politicians agree? I think when there's a perk, and again, back in 2007 when I was elected, or not elected, appointed, know that the insurance at the end of the day, you know, it's, I think for the people that sit here that do this, and, you know, it's, it's the perk, right? I mean, and I think that's what people, why they decide to run to a certain degree. But I, I don't, I mean, at Modesto County Supervisors, any of those people do?
I can't speak to that. I, I do know that when it was last implemented, and I don't know how, how, how long ago, is it 10 years or so ago? Prior to that, it was in the 70s, I think. And don't hold me to this, but it had been about 30 years since there had been any increase in compensation. And at the time, 10 years ago, nor so, when this was brought forward, an analysis was done on what other jurisdictions were compensating elected officials. And Series was significantly below what other jurisdictions were doing. And this was implemented to bring them on par with what other jurisdictions were compensating their electeds for the service that they do. So I think what, what the fundamental question is here is that, that, and again, I don't think I should be the one that answers this question or votes on it, but is do we believe that, or does the council believe that public service should be provided or with, with, without any benefits to it? So.
And just to, and just to clarify, you know, I, I don't want to, you know, I guess suspect people's intentions of why or why they do not run. I certainly didn't run for the perks or anything like that. And I would assume my colleagues didn't run for the perks, just as you mentioned, Councilman DeRocette. And but at the end of the day, we, we are a part-time council. $100,000 a year is pretty steep. I know that's, you consider our median income here in Series. It is a hefty price tag at the end of the day, and that's why I'm making the motion. I just believe that the money could be best used elsewhere. Because at the end of the day, this, this is about public service, and that's why we're all doing this.
Councilmember Klein?
You know, when I got elected nine years ago, you know, I didn't know that you got paid. I didn't know you got benefits. You know, as I look out here, county supervisors get, how would you say it, well compensated for being a county supervisor. And every one of the county supervisors have a second job. You know, their pay is between 70 and 80,000 dollars a year, and it depends on if you're the thing. Plus you get benefits and, you know, I think there's other perks in there also. And they all have extra jobs. So is that considered a part-time job? You look at City of Modesto, they're getting compensated $35,000 plus a year. City of Stockton, you know, they're 60, 70,000. You know, I can speak for myself, reading the agenda, going to StanCO, going to the Homeless Alliance Board, which is a two-hour meeting, you know, once a month. You know, I, I probably put in 40 to 50 hours a month, if not more, being a part of this board. Did I get, did I run to be, to get compensated for? No, I don't. It's a nice little perk. I think that I put my time in. I think that I turn around and serve this city well. I participate in things that, uh, some of the other council members don't participate in. So to turn around and, and come, come up here and, and say that, you know, we don't deserve it, or we need to take it away. You know, I think that it's a slap in the face to us council members and the council members before us of, of what we've done and how we've dedicated ourselves to the city. And what we've done as far as tried to be a steward of the city and, and sit here for two hours or more and discuss budgets and things like that. I, I, I'm going to tell you, I, I'm insulted. I, I'm a slap in the face for, for the time that we've had to put and the time that we put in on our own time, reading this budget, doing the general plan update, doing the, doing the ordinances and everything like that. Uh, you know, I think that, you know, you look at the whole picture, we put substantial time into those things and substantial effort. So no, I cannot support that.
And I'm sorry that it's a slap in the face. I'm sorry you took it that way. It has absolutely nothing to do with it. And deserve has nothing to do with it. It's simply about spending, believing that the money can be best used elsewhere. It's about prioritizing your money and prioritizing your budget. And I, I don't know that reading a budget warrants $100,000 healthcare. That's just my point. That's, that's, that's where I'm at. We are a part-time council. And, uh, you know, if, if our, if we were in better shape and we didn't have a community center debt or this or that, um, you know, I would, I would probably be open to it. But I do believe it is about public service at the end of the day. We don't do this for healthcare. We do this to make a difference. And I, it's not a slap in the face, Councilmember Klein, I'm sorry you took it that way. It's just believing that the money can be best used elsewhere and can be put towards something else. And that's my motion, but I'd appreciate a second.
Okay, to answer your, your question, I mean, it, it's a bold statement, and I, I can appreciate you, you know, offering that up. But every one of the current board of supervisors has another job. So I might say that that's a part-time job too. So might, it might put you in a compromising position should you get elected if someone asks you to give up your salary as a county supervisor, considering all the other board of supervisors have jobs and someone could say that that's part-time too. But again, that's, that's another subject. So we do have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second for this item?
Well, and just to clarify, I have brought this up before, before there was ever in consideration about that side topic. So I, and I, I don't know why that's a part of this discussion. I understand my position. I had the position long before that. It is about just believing that the money can be best used elsewhere.
All right, so it looks like the motion dies for lack of a second. So we will move to the positions or number of positions or, or lack thereof. Is there anyone that wants to make a motion on that item?
Mayor, I'm going to bring the, that list up that I had created. So these were the 20 that had been recommended by me. And I think that, you know, it's important in your deliberations and motion. These are the currently vacant positions as we move through adoption of the budget and we move through the years or this year, this current fiscal year, there's going to be other vacancies within the city. Hopeful that depending upon those positions, we could start a recruitment to hire for those. So for example, there are three firefighter positions that are included on this list. But just today, we found out there would be another resignation. So there's four. If we had adopted this budget and said, "Go ahead, city manager, hire those three positions," and then I got the announcement about somebody leaving next week, I would want to fill that position because it was already included in the budget. So just wanted to have that, maybe some dialogue amongst the council when you deliberate.
Okay. And remember when making the motion or whatever, that we, we need to focus on the two resolutions, correct?
Correct.
Anybody want to throw out a number?
I almost think we've got to go down. I have this big list here.
Oh, it's, it's in the PowerPoint.
I almost think we just got to go one by one.
I would agree.
I'm going to say, I'm going to say we need to have the three water resource analysts, water operator, wastewater. That's not general fund money.
And those do not affect the general fund.
That's what he said. And I.
I'll second that, I'll second that.
Do we need to have a motion on all of these, Tom?
Write them down first and then come back to them all.
Yeah, I think he just had to stretch his back a little bit. So might be best to kind of list them all out and then just do it under one motion.
Okay, so I, I think, I think we're good. I've heard at least four council members that are good with that and five. So yeah, those, those are, those positions are okay.
Those were the wastewater.
Operator one and two, and water operator one and two.
They can be hired at either level, so it's just two positions, one for each.
Fleet mechanic. We only have one.
We only have one.
Right, Jeremy?
It's just a, it's just a, that's just a classification of the job. We have two fleet mechanics.
We have two, because we lost one, right? And we didn't hire. And we got four new fire trucks or apparatuses, correct?
Wait, so what, what's the total out at the fleet? We have a supervisor and two mechanics? The supervisor do any kind of mechanic work? Okay. Okay, so we have three. So if we look at the big list at fleet mechanic, 59% is general fund.
Yeah, 59,000.
Okay, well, I don't support that because I'm going more for police and firefighter.
I would agree.
Yes.
Jeremy, can you make sure the mic's on?
So to clarify on the fleet, when a vehicle comes into the shop for repair, we prepare the vehicle. We collect those charges, we bill them out next January for next year's budget. But it doesn't matter if, it's not a matter of evenly proportioned. We don't separate out percentages for departments, for water, for sewer, anything like that. It's based on the vehicles that come to the shop. But that, that one position, there's probably going to be a considerable increase this year to fire because of all the new apparatuses come in, plus all the additional repairs that we're doing. Same for PD with all the cars that we're building. It's not a matter of an allocation specific to general fund to water. Makes sense?
Yes, because it's an internal service fund. I get that.
Correct.
So the 58, 59% general fund is really general fund internal services?
I'm not sure where the 59% came from. We only charge out for fleet and for facilities to the departments that request work. It's not a, it's not a specific allocation for, you know, 30% comes to water, similar to salaries. That's not how the internal service fund works.
Okay, so maybe the bigger question is, we got new fire apparatus, but it replaced old fire apparatus, which we probably spent more time repairing the old than we should be on the new. So I'm thinking I'm okay if we revisit the fleet mechanic mid-year.
Those two don't, you want to, what, what did you say Vice Mayor right now?
I, I said that I'm okay if we waited until mid-year to revisit the fleet mechanic because Councilmember Drossit's argument about the new fire apparatus should be that it's new versus the old stuff that we got rid of. And so there should be less maintenance.
Maintenance is maintenance.
So mid-year, no mid-year? Pardon me? Mid-year or no mid-year position? Those two do not want it now. She's saying reviewing it mid, mid, mid-year. So I'm asking you, and then we'll go down the list, because if you say no, then we're moving on to the next one.
I, I say, I say we need to hire them.
I already said.
And I believe we need to hire them as well. So, okay, let's move on to the next one.
How about no custodian? Bargain.
Is a custodian for this place?
For the city, just to be used around city facilities.
How are we doing it right now?
Jeremy?
Is it like same, would cost us the same amount as a 73%, 62,000?
No, no, but there's probably 30,000 spent on overtime right now. Between, you know, time off vacations and then short staffing and having to pick up.
Do the employees like getting the overtime?
No. Getting old.
How many custodians do we have?
Uh, right now, we've got three.
And is the police department still contracted out for?
This building is. This is the only, this building is the only one that's contracted out.
And do, does the fire, do they do their own custodial work?
Correct.
Okay.
No, we're going to start this way now. I don't want to single him out all the time.
I mean, you know, I, I think we could look, check it out mid-year.
Okay, I'm good with that.
I'm good with mid-year.
Mid-year.
Looks like mid-year on that one. Parks maintenance worker, one.
Parks look pretty bad. I mean, truly.
And Eastgate's coming onboard, you know, Lions Park is just down the road from it. As soon as we start opening up River Bluff back up, maintenance solved, River Bluff is one man alone by itself. Sitting with three full-time park maintenance workers, a senior maintenance worker to take care of all irrigation issues, leaks in the right of ways, the damage and the vandalism. Playground equipment stacked up on vandalism.
Can we start down there?
Okay, you can start down here, and I'll tell you what, I can go with the park maintenance worker, but I cannot go with the part-time one.
Well, if you're asking me, I want them both.
I know you do.
When we put, when we put the lawnmower.
So I'll give you the part-time one then.
When we put the lawnmower out there to mow the park, the part-timers are going through behind the lawnmower to do the weed eating, the edging and the blowing off sidewalks, so we can get through all the parks.
Well, I'll give, I'll give you one of the two.
I'll take the full time.
So you want the parks person or no?
Well, I don't even know why I'm doing this because I'm going to probably have to vote no on the budget. Because we don't, because we don't have money for all of this is what I'm, is.
And just say no.
No.
Okay, see, it wasn't that hard.
I'd be for the full time.
You, yes, you want them? Okay. And I'm okay with it. I'm okay with all of them. I already, I already filled my guts about that. So you, you know where I stand, so. IT analyst?
First question is, is that to replace the retirement?
Yes.
I say yes.
Yes as well.
Yeah. Yes. Okay, HR director?
I'm going to say yes, definitely.
You said yes, what? He said yes, definitely. Okay.
How can you run a city without, without a human resources director?
Okay, but you want an HR director and an HR analyst.
No, I don't. I'm only doing the HR director.
Well, that would only be if your HR director is going to step up and do negotiations. And it's going to help the one HR person that we have working now. You have one person in HR right now, so if you're going to hire someone, they need to either be an HR manager that's going to do the work or that when you hire your HR director, you say you're going to be a working director because we only have one HR person and one HR person can't do it by themselves.
Remember, she's not.
She's going to vote no anyway. I mean, I, I just say an HR director, yes.
Of course.
Yes.
I agree. Okay. Human resources analyst?
No.
Okay. Mid-year.
Mid-year as well. That's fine, I can live with that. Firefighter deputy, what about deputy finance director? I missed one.
I didn't see that.
It's on this.
It's on the list. It's on the big list. I'm going, I'm going down the big list.
I'm going on what's in front of me here, because I can't read the small print.
All right, then I'll, we'll, I'll switch over to there.
Well, we're on, the next one we're on is a firefighter.
That director.
Three positions. No, not on this list.
So this is the one that was the recommended positions to hire?
This is the 20, that other one, then the eight, he's recommended.
Isn't that your position?
Correct.
Why aren't we hiring for your position? Are you still going to do your position?
He's taking one team.
We are. So I'd like to put this one on there and say mid-year.
Let's go through the first ones we have.
All right. This is right mid-year then.
So firefighter, three positions.
It's going to be four. Tomorrow's the last day for one of our captains, correct?
Correct.
So.
Yeah, but the, the, the one we're already paying for.
Right. Now, is that one going to get brought back to us as well?
We're hoping not to. So if, if we go with these positions, then kind of as we move forward, we would just hire the positions if there's a vacancy.
A hundred percent yes. Yes, okay, yes. Yes. Yeah, so that one, we're good. Police officer, five positions?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I was going to go three.
You know, I just want to make sure that, because we told the POA that we would come back after September to see what's going on. So we could say.
If you want to say three, say three.
We say five, and then maybe, maybe it's only three and there's other things that happened. We, and we go for what's going on, so.
I, I think that through any recruitment process, especially for a law enforcement officer in this, the nation of the United States, those five positions, even if we started recruitment, it's probably going to be sometime before those are even considered being filled. So I mean, my recommendation is to move forward with all five of them.
And if there's a couple more shootings like LA, we probably won't be able to fill that five for a long time, right?
Yes, chief?
How long do you think it'll take you, chief, to fill five positions? Of the year? That's what I thought. So we, we can ask for five. It'll probably take him a long time to find five.
You know, just in talking with some of the POA members and stuff, and I know I had a conversation with you today, chief, in regards to, you know, obviously we've been down several police officers. And at the end of the day, we're losing several police officers in other jurisdictions. Because again, they're the only ones that didn't have the contract completed and they did it two years or three years. Saying something wrong, you know, you know. But the other part too, is I know some of the things that they were looking for possibly was not necessarily completing and fulfilling the entire squad, but also maybe being able to have the contract looked at, because we still haven't finished it. Now, I could be wrong in that regard, but I know something we talked about today.
I think we're good with the five positions or there, something there of. Okay. wording work for you? Okay. Administrative secretary, code enforcement slash code enforcement secretary?
I already know your answer.
Well, no, well, first of all, you can't have an administrative secretary slash code enforcement secretary. They're two different classifications, administrative and secretary. I would rather see the city clerk get a part-time secretary that shared with either finance, if they really need one, or code enforcement. But again, you could do a secretary with finance and to split with the city clerk, because she has a ridiculous amount of public records requests that come in constantly. And then you could give code enforcement a part-time secretary by using the fire secretary and splitting her time 50% fire and 50% code enforcement, which you already have that person there.
I like what she said.
I'd be open to it.
Did you get, did you get that direction, Tom?
Yes.
Dispatcher?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Associate engineer?
Are we already filling these right now? What are we filling for the engineering right now?
The engineering tech, we hired somebody that started last Wednesday. They did a recruitment for the associate engineer. The candidate pool had some good opportunities, but nothing panned out, so that position did not get hired. So it'll be, we'll have to recruit that at some point.
Okay, so how many do we have in engineering right now? We have the director.
You have secretary, an associate engineer, engineering, and then three engineers or four engineering techs.
Currently working?
So I think that total, there are six employees in the engineering division.
In the previous budget, in last year's budget, the two positions we recruited for were an associate engineer and an engineering technician. Originally, the council approved the addition of the, those, those positions were new additional positions. So these were just vacancies. But we have three vacancies right now, though. And one of them, you already authorized us to proceed with the recruitment. So I don't know if that answered your question.
No. So we have, we have seven employees in engineering.
Currently.
One of which is the secretary and one is you. So we have five employees.
Yeah, one of, one of them just started last Wednesday.
Okay, but we have five other than you and the secretary.
Yes.
Yep.
So I would say we don't need to fill those two that are on there.
Is the associate engineer licensed?
No. And, and another thing is that these two positions don't hit the general fund. I think they hit the general fund for about 10% of their total compensation package.
Yeah, largely the engineering positions are paid out of water, sewer and grant funds. The, the, the most of the impact is from the secretary position.
Do we need nine employees in engineering?
What we don't have is.
I'm asking.
We, we would, we would have 10, and I, I will, just since we're talking about it. I mean, we have a huge project coming up for the terminal facilities at, at River Bluff. We, I think Jeremy, that's around between five and $10 million project. We're, you know, trying to move forward on the Service Mitchell interchange project. And, you know, Eastgate, River Bluff kayak ramp, we're, we're doing a lot of construction right now. So my concern is getting people to do the design and programming for next, um, next year's construction projects. I think there, if we don't hire people, we may have a little bit of a delay in getting those projects out. But we have a lot of CIP projects and, you know, we could definitely use these people.
Okay, if this spreadsheet is correct, it shows that the associate engineer doesn't come out of anything out of general fund. Is that correct, Mr. Westbrook?
Correct. Yep.
And then the engineering tech would be the same way, so we might as well fill them.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm okay with it. But I would agree with you, that's a, help the engineering staff. So I would expect quite a work product to come out of that group.
I, I would definitely agree on that one.
That's half of my whole office and we pump through a lot of work. So anyway, that's for another subject, but.
That's just for the one engineering tech.
No, we talked about two, because both of them don't come out of the general fund.
No, there's an associate.
And then the engineering tech is either hired as a one or a two. It's just one position.
Okay.
No, it's one slash two.
And they're going to have trouble finding people for those positions too, so. Okay, there was other positions that aren't on this list, correct?
Yeah, these were those positions. So essentially freezing the code enforcement secretary and the deputy city clerk is going to be taken out of the budget altogether at this point. So the other positions are the park maintenance worker, which you. So the other positions are the park maintenance worker, which you've determined that you wanted to evacuate, I think at the mid-year. Um, the only other positions included on the list are the director of community development, the deputy finance director, and the recreation supervisor.
And you were recommending freezing, freezing those, correct?
Um, to the mid-year budget, unless the council decides to move forward sooner.
We have other ones we're gonna look at mid-year, so they can be looked at.
Alright, perfect. Okay. I know you wanna speak, something?
I'm gonna bring back the recreation supervisor with a different title, that's gonna be more hospitality-based for revenue, so that title will be changing, but it'll be more driven to bring back the revenue to the community center. When it be revisited mid-year budget.
So are we talking about all these positions here, coming back mid, or just some of them?
That was.
I have, I have no problem coming back mid-year, but I would, you know, with, with what the, uh, uh, Matt had said, recreation supervisor is gonna come back with another label, so I'd like to have that one eliminated and, and bring back what he was proposing for the new title.
I'd agree with that.
Fine. My advice would be that you, we look hard at the deputy city clerk position at mid-year, because if the one that we have decides she wants to go somewhere else, we'd be really in the world. So, just my recommendation, but I won't be here, so.
She's gonna have a helper, so she'll be happy. We, we authorize the helper, so.
Okay, alright, so do we, okay, now with, with that, do we need to take these two resolutions with information that we provided you? Is that how you wanna handle it, or do you want to make those changes and come back with?
No, I think that we could, we could do it all now. Um, just wanted that discussion, if, for example, we, we move forward and we're hiring, uh, let's say, a firefighter, and we have another vacancy, staff authorized to fill that position.
Bring it back, and then we can, we can address it at that point, if something changes.
Individual positions.
Fine. That's how I think you should do it, or we'll never get it done.
No, no, I mean, just, let's say we're in December now, and we have a firefighter vacancy. It's a budgeted position, would we have authorization to fill the position?
I, I would think so, if, if the budget got approved and the position was there and it didn't fill, then you wanna fill it. It's my feeling is we've got approved in the budget.
Okay.
I would agree with the mayor.
That's what your job is, why, why should we hamstring you? Yeah.
I do, I do wanna commend Mr. Westbrook and our finance director as well for this, this putting this together. You guys did a great job, I do think we're making incredible strides of public safety. You know, I called around other council members in the area, no one's making strides like this in public safety, so I really wanna commend you guys for putting this together, did a great job.
Thank you.
Okay, so does someone wanna make a motion on the first item?
I moved to, uh, pass twenty twenty one hundred, adopting the annual budget for the city of Series for the fiscal year, we send in the spending limit of eighteen million, five hundred thousand September twenty twenty, and appropriate positions for the fiscal year twenty twenty one, we discussed.
Well, that number may change, correct? Based on the positions that we just gave you direction on.
Yes, a couple of positions will come out of that list.
So whatever change.
Yes, with the spending limit as determined by the positions that the council authorized, does that work?
Perfect.
Okay, so we have a motion on that, second?
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion, a second, can we have the roll call vote, please?
Council member Condit?
Hi.
Council member DeRosa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
No.
Council member Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Vieira?
Yes.
Motion passes four oh one.
Okay, then we have the next resolution number to address. Move to adopt resolution twenty twenty one oh one, adopting the appropriation limitations for fiscal year twenty nine, uh, twenty 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 one. Second. Do we have a motion, a second, can we have the roll call vote, please?
Council member Condit?
Hi.
Council member DeRosa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
No.
Council member Klein?
Yes.
And Mayor Vieira?
Yes.
Motion passes four oh one.
Thank you, so we have no new business, um. How about, uh, council member referrals, is there anyone in the council that'd like to have an item placed on a future agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do have a referral tonight. Um, in light of the action, uh, from the last meeting, I would like to have the consideration from the council to rename East Gate Park in honor of late council member Yarimo Ochoa. Council member Ochoa was an incredible leader and a bridge for our community. I believe it would be an appropriate gesture to honor his memory, his legacy, and his family. I would ask the city manager to bring this back to the council for consideration, thank you.
You're with the council, okay?
I, I have a comment that the last two parks that we named, we actually, um, put it out to the community, and we, there was, I think, a committee of community members, and then they had a contest, and that was how they came up with the two, Neil Park and Samurai Park, and it seems to me that.
I think we can have that discussion, I'm just asking for consideration that we do consider naming this in honor of council member Ochoa.
So maybe when you bring it back, in the staff report, you can go through what was the last time, and then everybody come up to speed on that.
Yep.
Okay, um, reports, I have nothing to report. Council member Condit?
Nothing to report tonight.
Council member Klein?
I have nothing to report, but I would like to thank staff for, uh, the budget, the budget process. I know this takes a little bit of a long time, uh, and, you know, we're right here with what we've approved. Then I think that, uh, you gotta look at twenty one, twenty two, uh, because it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a tough year, so, uh, that's it.
Mr. Mayor Rhino?
I think tonight, mayor.
Council member DeRosa?
Nothing.
Hey, Mr. Westbrook?
Um, yeah, echo the, the comments that the council made regarding the budget process. Um, I have to thank Letitia and her team, uh, they made my job, uh, very easy, uh, getting me all the information I needed in a very timely manner, so thank you very much, Letitia. Uh, and I think that I've talked enough for tonight, so that's it.
Okay, Letitia, I think, Tom? Eve Collins?
Nothing, mayor.
Crane? Jeremy, nothing? Kevin, nothing? Okay, Daniel? Lord?
Yeah, just an update that we're starting our fall programs. Um, a lot of those programs will be outside until the first of October, hoping the health clearance that be back in the building offering programming. That's not available, um, the option of being in the community center, we will be moving those programs outside now with, well, not decent weather the past few days with the air quality, but in the fall with the cooler temperatures, that will make that possible, that we can do some painting classes and some fitness classes out in the parks, so next few weeks you'll start seeing that happen, um, we're very excited. Um, also wanted to share, um, an update on our special events at the next, probably not in the first of October, updating you kind of what we're doing with special events, I'm meeting with a couple council members over the next couple of weeks to, um, on concert series, um, Christmas tree lane, to kind of plan those out, to let the community know as soon as possible, that's all I have.
Thank you, alright, with that, the council will move to closed session, we have one item, conference with legal counsel on existing litigation, the city of Series versus the Dow Chemical Company. Um, and then if there was anything that needs to be reported after that, we will, uh, uh, come out and report it. After that, we will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be held on Monday, September twenty eighth, twenty twenty at six PM, so thank you.
Okay, after returning from closed session, the council gave a direction to staff on this matter.
Thank you.